For the pledge of allegiance and the mandate of citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, any? Can you do? Do the... Again. Go take us?
To approve the regular and consent agenda. I'll say it.
We've made the motion to approve the regular and consent agenda. Lee seconded that. All those in favor? And abstained? Um, okay, are there any new hires here today?
Tiffany Sartin is here tonight, and she started as an instructional assistant in December at Fillmore. And um, she's been working in the preschool classroom. And so she will be transferring next year to be the preschool teacher in our community preschool room for our students who are kindergarten bound the following year. So she has done an excellent job. She's reliable, professional, and always wants to do what's best for kids. So every conversation that I have with Tiffany, um, she's talking about the kids and her face lights up and the progress that they've made. And um, she came to me one day and said, you know, this is what I really want to do. Um, she, she really loves it. And so I'm really excited. We're really blessed to have Tiffany at Fillmore, and she's going to do an excellent job as our new preschool teacher.
Thank you. I'll be right back.
Welcome.
Okay, presentation.
It's gonna take us just a second to get them organized. Um, but thank you guys for having us, first of all. Um, so I'll introduce what they're gonna do. It's a little bit different than what we've traditionally done, presenting something that our chapter's been doing in the past. Um, this is called Ag Issues Forum, which is a new contest that we have not done before. And it is a contest where they decide on an issue in their community or in ag, in general. And they've chosen the topic on solar farms. So there's a solar farm potential going in here in our district and also in the Cloverdale district. And so what their role is in this contest is that they have to present on both sides of the issue. They have to present pros, cons of the issue, and they are not allowed as a team to present what the right answer is. Um, so what we've done with the script, the, the rules in the contest are really open to how they want to present. It can be um, anything, and they can use whatever supplies. So we've chose to keep, chosen to keep it pretty simple. Um, and we're modeling a board meeting. So they're modeling the zoning committee, um, as if it was a zoning committee in Putnam County. And these two, and you guys will kind of see as they go through their script, these two are serving as the committee members. And those four are serving as experts in various, on the, you know, pro and con side of it. Um, what we need from you guys, one is obviously for them to do the forum, but two, to document for us that we presented this. Because one piece of this contest is that we submit a document that um, that explains both sides of the issue and that they presented forums in our community. Um, and then after, well, that'll be later on. Either of you to get that document, but also feedback on how to improve and what, what things they're missing in the issue. What things we need to continue to add. This is our first forum, our first public forum. We've left about five minutes that we can add and adjust things in the script. So we need to see how to grow. This is one of the ways that we, we grow in FFA and hopefully they do well and you get some really good questions. And we're welcome to take questions also from the audience because essentially is an issue that will affect our kids in our community in real life. Uh, and I'm gonna be taking pictures as they go. Are you guys ready? I'll turn the floor over.
The council will come to order. Welcome to today's council meeting. I'm Stone Stouch, and I'm the chair of the council tonight. As you can see, only two council members, Jocelyn and I, are present today. Our agenda tonight is somewhat short and only consists of one request to rezone land. For the sake of the missing three people, we are recording today's meeting. After watching this recording, our other council members will decide what to do with the information put forth. Both of the members here tonight are choosing to remain neutral and come to a final decision after another public meeting with all voting members present.
I am Jocelyn Bumgardner. We will be asking questions and getting facts from our provided experts on this topic. One of the main points of discord within Putnam County currently is solar farms and solar farming compared to traditional agrarian farming. There are roughly three hundred seven thousand three hundred acres of land in Putnam County. And one specific family who owns land is working to convert about three thousand acres between the South Putnam and Cloverdale School Districts to a solar farm. But this is not of their land, it's only about twenty percent. For reference, the town of Cloverdale is only two thousand two hundred and fifty-three acres. This has been a topic of contention that has lot of peo, that has lots of people on either side of the discussion. And this forum today is aimed at bringing facts to the surface, so a recommendation about solar farming in Putnam County can be reached.
As previously stated, there is a farmer who is planning to install a solar farm. The focus of this council meeting is to address the rise of solar farms and determine whether they should be permitted in Putnam County. This topic is important because of the rise in popularity of solar farms on rural land and the backlash some laners, landowners are receiving because of the use of these solar farms. Not only this, but the rise of technological advances are, and their impact on small, traditionally agricultural communities has been increasing in the recent years.
The family is asking the committee to rezone the three thousand acres near the high voltage line from A1 agriculture land to in our natural resources, which would allow their family to contract with Energy RE to construct a solar farm on that portion of their family's land.
Now to the questions. First, what are the environmental benefits of placing solar farms in Putnam County? We would now like to introduce people to step up to the podium to give their answers.
Hello, my name is Ethan. I am an ag, environmental activist. I have many reasons as why solar farms should go into Putnam County. More than eighty percent of our state's generated electricity comes from coal burning and natural gas. Our community also has a biofuel production, which is an alternate fuel source of energy that comes from crops, use of crops. Therefore, the amount of grain is not being put into food supply for animals or people. But the energy and state sends money to burn fossil, fossil fuels and gases. More than eighty percent of Indiana's electricity is created this way. Burning fossil fuels releases carbon dioxide and cast acetyls. That can, that are no, not clean for our environment's health. That this contribu, contributing factor to Indiana being third on the list of, third on a list based on poor air quality. And the installation of solar panels could help bring us down on that list to make us have a better air quality.
Thank you, Ethan. We will take this into consideration. Our next question is, how will this affect Putnam County farmers who own one hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight acres of land according to the census of 2019?
I am Bailey, and I would like to speak about this. I am a farmer in Putnam County, and my family has made their livelihood through conventional farming styles for years. If we were to introduce solar farms, we would lose most of my family's traditional values. Also, solar farms are going to be put on agricultural land. If we were to place solar farms in Putnam County, then remove the solar farms later on, the land would have to sit unused for twenty to thirty years before it can be truly as fertile as it, and usable as it was before. There is some disagreement among experts on this. However, the soil is very important to the plants, and we need to protect it. According to many scientific sources, such as the Institute for Energy Research, the soil is destroyed when these farms are installed in terms of compaction, allowing it to not absorb water and erode practically all of the topsoil used for growing strong plants and crops. Solar panels can also disperse heavy metals and chemical liquids, which could affect our water quality, as the U.S. Energy Information website states.
Thank you. Next, we would like to know how this upcoming, how this up and coming issue may affect the youth and future generations of Putnam County.
My name is Molly Trammell, and I am a school superintendent. I believe this would benefit our youth immensely. If we place solar farms in Putnam County, it could raise property taxes because we would have a significant increase in the assessed value of property in our school district, which would help our schools by increasing the funding, funding given to them. To understand this more simply, there are two pots of money that schools can use to operate. First is the education fund, which is from the state ADM, or Average Daily Membership, and is used for educational expenses like teacher salary and student supplies. This pot of money will not be affected. Second is the operations fund. This is funded through local tax levies, and we budget based on the assessed value of property in our school district. For South Putnam, there is a great deal of land that is state-owned and untaxed. This solar project would potentially create significant revenue for both the South Putnam and Cloverdale School Districts because it would increase the total assessment. It may even be a possibility that the total tax rate may decrease for homeowners because of an increase in assessed value that could offset a portion of the budget. Currently, the tax rate is sixty-eight point six seven cents per a hundred dollars of assessed value, which is pretty similar to the other schools in the county.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Now that we know how this affects the kids in our community, how does this affect Putnam County homeowners and their property value?
Good evening, council. My name is Dory. I am here because I received a flyer from the Putnam County Rural Preservation Society. I am a homeowner in Putnam County with my family, and I am concerned that if solar farms were placed near my home, my property value could decrease. I'm going to be honest, my property is adjacent to part of the proposed solar farm, and I don't want to look at the panels for the next twenty to thirty years. I bought rural property so I can enjoy our natural environment and beautiful sunrises and sunsets without seeing manmade objects and waking up to the glare of the glass. Also, if my property value decreases, it could cause problems such as negative equity and reduced homeowner wealth. Homes in southern Indiana are struggling with decreased property value as it is. Before other factors come into play, there are currently two hundred and nine homes for sale in Putnam County. It's been shown that homeowners are choosing not to live within half a mile of a solar farm, which accounts for about three, for about a three percent decrease in home sales, which was worth nine thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. I am also worried about potential fires. I have kids at home, and this could prove dangerous to a family if a fire were to start in solar farms near my land.
These are all great points that our absent council will take into consideration. I will now be concluding the cons of the situation. First, if solar farms were introduced, farmers would be losing their land to solar companies for a short, short-term profit. And eventually could lose significant amounts of money if their fields are destroyed in terms of soil erosion and harming the ability to produce. Then, we would, we could also take away the rights of homeowners by diminishing their ability to sell their homes if they please, which can be classified as a homeowner's rights being taken away. Finally, solar farms could potentially create fires and hazards that emergency services are not yet trained to handle.
I would like to conclude the pros of solar farming in Putnam County. The first is that it would benefit us environmentally as we are producing more clean energy, and it could make a huge impact on Indiana's standing on the pollution list. The second is that it would help our schools and kids in Putnam County. It would give our kids more funding and opportunities through their education and help many generations yet to come, which could help the future of Putnam County.
We would like to thank you all for coming out today. We also want to give a special thanks to those experts who spoke this evening. As we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we do not have a quorum of membership of the council this evening, so no action will be taken tonight. We will continue to research this issue and present our findings and a decision on the request of the rezone, of rezoning the property at next month's meeting.
I move to postpone action on this motion until the next monthly meeting.
With an implied second, the motion to rezone has been presented. All in favor, raise your hand. Postponed, that completes our agenda for the evening. I declare this meeting adjourned.
We would now like to open the floor for, for our judges and our guest listeners.
So if you guys have questions or if the audience has questions for them.
I'm not clear on how having a solar farm would increase funding for school.
So schools get their money from the second pot, uh, the second fund is the operations fund. They get money from the tax that our homeowners pay in the county. So once we get those values of the homes and like the solar farms, as people are paying more tax on those, we get more money because of that.
Right, I, I get that part. Is there? In other words, there's no more land. It's not like we're building a home, right? So are you saying that the, a solar company, companies putting solar farms, they pay taxes?
Yeah, whoever owns the land, so like the family that we said earlier, who are wanting to put the solar farms down, their taxes would increase because they the ones who own solar farms. Solar farms just naturally generate more taxes, they're more expensive.
Because of the, uh, structure that they're adding, so the land itself is taxed at a rate, and then the structure, like you add a home.
So it was like improved, it's considered improved property?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. How do solar farms possibly have the potential for fires? Talk about fires?
Whenever you have a solar farm, you'll have that increasing amount of sunlight focused on one area. That could focus it on to brush and cause it to spark, but you're also dealing with high voltage power, which could also, if we have like another bad windstorm come through and knock one of the lines out, it could lay on the ground and spark. And that's just some of it.
Just a higher increased chance of wildfires.
So I know there's, there's a benefit to the environment to have solar farms, so you're not burning coal, right? But there's also a detriment involved too, when the solar panels break apart or they have to be trapped somewhere. So is there any, um, I don't know, data or any comparison so that you know whether it, which is more beneficial?
Like the offset from pollution from using non-renewable to the possible pollution coming from the destruction of the renewable?
Thank you. That's what I meant to say.
I haven't seen any yet, no.
I, um, I talked with Ms. Hodge, and she's very passionate about saving the environment because she's a biology teacher. She's very passionate about what she does. Um, she believes that solar farms are a way to have a better future as they um, are more healthy in the long term because we're not burning as many fossil fuels. And also, we can take solar farms away and clear them out, and animals and wildlife displacement can come back to where they were before if we just remove the farms.
As well as with that, solar farms don't completely remove a farm out of its capabilities producing. People still can raise certain vegetables or even animals, like the person that we talked to wanting to install a solar farm, plans to possibly raise sheep within that.
Or even grow like a small grain or a vegetable kind of thing in between the panels where there's still enough sunlight getting to it, but it's not like underneath the panels.
It doesn't completely rule out a land of agriculture production.
Put concrete down, right?
No.
Posts. I mean, there is concrete holding the post in some cases, but not like pads.
Been curious where the energy goes. That might sound like a remedial question, but I don't know.
Uh, in the scenario we were talking about, there is a high voltage power line that runs right across the field. So they'll tap into that, and it'll feed it just like a coal plant would.
It just runs to a high voltage power plant up north.
Sorry. Benefits from, like, I know the one in North Putnam, I'm under the impression that the school benefits from the solar farms up there by North Putnam. It helps them not have to pay their electric bills and things like that. So who's, if the solar energy is gonna be here at that place, who ultimately then benefits from that cleaner, cheaper electricity? Is it people in Putnam County, or is it just gonna be a customer anywhere?
It should be both, both people in Putnam County and people through your school district because that could lower, at the beginning of the year, that could lower taxes and funds that the parents have to provide for their kids to go there. It could lower book costs because that's more money coming into the school, and that's able to be used towards their education. So it's not only like just the schools keeping, it's like make renovations. It's so that parent costs at the beginning of the year can go down.
But neither the school, like, both in the corporations, so neither of the schools will get a, a benefit from this, like making their electric bills lower or anything.
Correct. So from, uh, from my understanding, you guys want to? No, man is the one who's proposing this, um, and he's gonna talk for it. Um, and what he said is, obviously his family is gonna benefit because, um, the rate that you would be able to cash rent for, if you're gonna continue to rent it as farmland, or that they would be able to make a profit from producing grain of whatever sort on it, is less than what the energy company would pay rent to them for using the land. And they would have a certain year lease that they would have that contract for. So the Mann family would benefit directly. Indirectly, the schools are benefiting because they're increasing the assessed value by putting the structures up. Um, the electricity would just go into the grid and whatever.
Wherever it goes.
The electric company is ultimately gonna be the one that, that benefits from the production of electricity. We would benefit.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments? The growing moment for them.
Suggestions, tips?
You guys did a great job.
The only thing I would suggest, and that's because old ears hear more slowly, if you would just slow down.
Like we heard that in the classroom before we came down here.
Cause you could tell, because.
We heard that feedback, thank you for saying that.
I know you had more to say. Okay, but the second time you spoke was spot on. You, you slowed it down, you moderated your voice, it projected it, and it was spot on. But I could tell just because I had you before too, that the first time you were a little nervous about starting it, and it just seemed to rattle, because I think you were afraid you, like, there was gonna be a buzzer, and you'd call time on your.
I think it'll be easier once we have it memorized and not reading all the paper.
Yeah, that would definitely be better.
Just keep that in mind, because you're spot on all the times.
And just because you know your script doesn't mean your audience knows the script.
Yeah. I think I've heard that in theater a few times, Mr. Champion. Thank you.
That's it, if you guys want to move your chairs back.
You did marvelous stuff.
Thank you all. Okay, financial update, Dr. Smith.
Uh, yes, in your board packets, uh, you receive the latest financial reports through the end of March of this year. Um, that included all the claim dockets, the payrolls, the cash flows, the transfers, and the fund reports. Um, as I say frequently, in the, in those reports, we continue to perform as forecasted regarding all the impacts.
Thank you. Um, legislative, wait, wait, oh, Holly. Um, the biggest topic has been Hassel one, which did just pass, and it has about three hundred and fifty pages, so you don't really know the whole impact because nobody's read three hundred and fifty papers. One of the things, disturbing things, and there was that counties are gonna be able to impose a, an income tax, an additional income tax on people, um, to make up for the loss of, um, property tax. So it'll be interesting to see, hasn't been signed yet by the governor, but I think it might be. Um, project update, Doug Rambo from MKS. Come on, Doug.
Thank you. Geopolitics, I don't know. The other week it was STEM, you don't know. But, uh, the field house is ongoing. Um, some big, big progress, if, you know, everyone coming in the school sees, uh, a lot of CMU walls going up. Inside around the pool, a lot of demo, just a lot of dust, a lot of, you know, a lot of things going on. So, uh, we're pretty excited right now. Uh, schedule is, is looking good. We're still, uh, still holding dates, which is, which is, which is fine, but, uh, you know, we just have to remain diligent on, on all the line items going forward. The subs are, subs are manning, the jobs are very well, so really don't have much to complain about right now. But, uh, you know, and there's, you know, the pool, the pool is, uh, like I say, it started out late, and now we're, uh, it's going like gangbusters. We've had the concrete saws going, uh, trying to keep, uh, trying to keep the, uh, you know, trying to keep distractions to a minimum. So I think we've been doing pretty well at that. Then, uh, all the other projects right now are closed out, so that's exciting. So we closed out, we closed out the roofs, we closed out the field, we closed out the PA system. So there's some excitement there, but, uh, you know, just gonna keep on keeping on, so, any questions? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Max. Public comment?
No.
New business, consideration of Central Elementary and Fillmore Elementary Library surplus, Dr. Smith.
Uh, in your board packets, yeah, we have several library items that are needed to be surplus at both Central Elementary and Fillmore Elementary. Um, we're just asking for your approval tonight so we can start to process the, of removal of those items.
I move to approve the, uh, Fillmore and Central Elementary Library. Holly made the motion to approve the Central and Ele, Central Elementary and Fillmore Elementary Library surplus. Lee seconded that, all those in favor? Consideration of 4H camp bus usage.
Uh, this is an annual request, I think it's been going for the last two decades, I believe. So, uh, this is just this year's version. Uh, it's a partnership with Purdue Extension, and it's worked out really, really well over the years. Mr. Ogborne and, uh, the Extension worked together very well. Um, so this year we're just seeking approval of that request to use our buses and drivers to transport, uh, the youth to 4H camp, which is at Shaq and Mack again this year, um, which is the end of May.
I move to approve the use of buses and drivers to transport youth to 4H camp.
Hold on a second. We made the motion to approve the use of buses and drivers to transport youth to 4H camp. Holly seconded that, all those in favor? First reading of Corporation Neola policy updates, Dr. Smith.
Here we go again. Um, at the time, I do bring you the, uh, Neola Corporation policies. Uh, tonight's another one of those nights. Um, I've been working with Dr. Hallig, who's a Neola rep. Um, we've identified forty-one policies this time around, uh, for your first reading. Um, we'll revisit these policies at our May meeting for a second reading and board approval of these updates. This, again, it's just a first reading, there's no formal action required. Just FYI as well, um, a new packet of inform, of, uh, policies will be coming out the end of April, so you probably in May or June will get a first reading on those. So it'll be, the summer's gonna be churning, churning policy, and the new legislative session will have a lot as well, so.
Aren't you excited?
Lot of reading, it's a lot of reading and a lot of processing, I know, but, um, yeah, that'll, just, it'll be a summer of policy love, so.
Time's draw, okay.
Policy love.
Policy love. We don't need to approve the first reading part.
Nope, no action, nope.
All right. Um, consideration of overnight field trip.
Uh, in your packets, we have an overnight field trip for consideration. Um, it's, uh, per policy twenty-three forty, uh, you have to approve those, um, if they're out of state or overnight. And we're seeking approval for the FFA State Convention Trip, that's detailed there in those board packets.
I move to approve the field trip request. Second.
We made the motion to approve the field trip request. Wade seconded it, all those in favor? No other business, superintendent's report.
Yep, uh, pretty short tonight. Um, just appreciate everyone and the administrative team and all the department heads from last week coming to the, the work session. I think it was a very positive meeting, and got to see a lot of the, the neat things going on throughout the district. For a small district, we have a lot of interesting and neat things happening for our students and for the community. So it's absolutely great, great, great time to be an Eagle, for sure. Um, testing, it's that time of year, so there's testing going on in every building all the time now. And so it's just, it's that time of year, so, you know, just give me a heads up, that's what's happening in our buildings right now. Spring sports are in full competition mode and there are several records dropping that I'm hearing and seeing on social media, so pretty exciting times, seeing that track, this is a great time seeing that track really come through for us on these records, so. And then last, this Friday's Good Friday and it was a flex day and we didn't have to use it, so students and staff have the day off on Friday, so enjoy the three-day weekend.
Take travels.
Thank you.
Okay, so before we finish out, our next meeting, which I always forget to say, is May 21st, our regular business meeting at 6:00, and then we have an executive meeting after for Dr. Smith's evaluation. But I wanted to mention, because of the policy meeting, if, if you're seeing that there, I'm thinking that we need to tentatively schedule a public work session before our next meeting, maybe, based on, I haven't read through all the policies yet, I don't know if you looked at them. If there's anything that we need to discuss, you know, questions that we've done before, but anything that you want to rework or tweak or something, we'll have to use that at a public work session. So I'm thinking for your sake, because we can set a public work session, right, and cancel it if you don't need it. So what do you guys think about maybe just going ahead and setting it now and then canceling it if nobody comes up with any questions?
Same night?
Yeah.
Same night, okay.
Before or after? Before. Cause we evaluate.
5:30 before, so.
I didn't hear 5:30.
So you're talking 5:30 before the regular business?
Yes. 5:30, we have a works, public work session from May 21st, right, from 5:30 to 6:00, and then we would have our regular board meeting. Or we can discuss it in the regular board meeting.
I gotta get my work done.
So I don't know, it doesn't matter to me, whatever you guys want to do, we can wait and make the decision later.
How about we get, we give ourselves a meeting to really read and then check them, maybe touch base and then, in case we, in case someone feels like we need more than 30 minutes.
A lot of it might keep briefly mentioned, will depend on legislative tactics.
We could potentially schedule one and then if we feel like we need more time, then we can. Okay, let's tentatively, so you know, Erin, we're going to tentatively schedule a public work session for May 21st from 5:30 to 6:00, and that may or may not be canceled, but.
All right.
There may be a longer one before.
Right, and we just need 48, 48 business hour, you know, 48 hours, not including weekends or holidays, you know? We want to make it longer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now, if there's nothing else.